Yeah.
Okay, well, there's always something new. I I added pens, these, because I was had extra at home and we always learned to have pens that don't work. So these, these work. They're leftovers from when I bought them to give to kids in school. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM and I'm going to call to order this January fourteenth, Richfield City Council meeting. I did have one request from somebody that watched our swearing in and they asked us all to speak up and to be close to the microphone, so I'm just going to say that to everyone because they were very excited, but they couldn't hear all of us. So just a reminder to everyone, and so I'll try and use my teacher voice and if other people can as well, that would be great. If you're able to, please join us, stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have now reached the portion of our meeting where there is an open forum. Participants can share their comments in person by voicemail or email and may also request to participate virtually. For more information on submitting comments, refer to the Council Agenda and Minutes page on richfieldmn.gov/citycouncil. Clerk Friedrich, did we have any email or voicemail submissions?
I did not receive any emails or voicemail submissions.
All right, has anybody filled out a form for an in-person comment?
Not that I've received.
All right, is there anyone here who wishes to speak at the open forum? All right, since no one is coming forward, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the City Council Work Session Meeting and the City Council Regular Meeting from December tenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'm of approval of both sets of minutes.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving those two sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and we have approved the minutes. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? I know there was a request to hold item K out of the consent calendar and to move that off of the consent calendar to talk about that and vote separately. So with that item being pulled, is there any other changes to the, are there any other changes to the agenda? All in favor of approving the agenda with item K being moved off of the consent calendar and onto the regular agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and we've taken care of that. So next, we'll move on to the consent calendar. City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider annual designation of Mayor pro tempore, Council Representatives and Acting City Manager. Item B, consider the approval of the first reading of an ordinance updating requirements for maintenance of fowl and birds and schedule a public hearing and second reading for January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Item C, consider a resolution designating an official newspaper for two thousand twenty-five. Item D, consider the approval of cannabis and substance use prevention funding from the Minnesota Department of Health. Item E, consider approval of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Blessed Trinity Catholic School located at Saint Richards Catholic Church, seventy-five forty Penn Avenue South for their two thousand twenty-five snowball dance taking place February first, two thousand twenty-five. Item F, consider a grant compliance agreement with Penn Station Apartments LLP regarding a livable communities demonstration account pre-development grant for sixty-five oh one to sixty-five twenty-five Penn Avenue South. Item G, consider adoption of a resolution of support for a grant application to MinDOT Safe Routes to School Infrastructure Grant Program for a sidewalk project on streets adjacent to Sheridan Hills Elementary School. Item H, consider adoption of a resolution of support for Richfield's application for federal funding for reconstruction project on Seventy-seventh Street via the United States Department of Transportation, Rebuilding America, Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Grant Program. Item I, consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the city of Richfield to accept grant funds in the amount of ten thousand and enter into a source water protection grant agreement with the Minnesota Department of Health to seal a non-municipal community water supply well and authorizing the city to enter into a cooperative agreement with Woodlawn Terrace Cooperative to assist with the sealing of their out-of-service community water supply well. Item J, consider approval of the bid tabulation and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute a contract with Vizu Sewer for the two thousand twenty-five sanitary sewer cured-in-place pipe lining project in the amount of one million thirty-four thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and authorize the city manager to approve contract changes up to one hundred and seventy-five thousand without further City Council consideration. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar. Thank you.
So we're considering items A through J. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve items A through J on the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? I did have a request on item B, the first reading of the ordinance updating the requirements for fowl and birds. We're going to be having the second reading on January twenty eighth. And I had asked a number of questions from to staff about things like what's how the amendment's going to go to Appendix D, like exactly how much the permit fee was going to be. And since we now have the avian influenza going around, you know, how is this going to help safeguard Richfield if we do this? And I got a lot of really good information and learned a lot. And my request is that that be shared in the staff report or be sent out to the rest of the council so that they have that same information before we vote for the second one. I didn't pull it off the consent calendar, but I would request that that information be shared because it was very helpful when I was considering this. Is that possible?
We'll make sure that that's in the staff report and shared with the council before the next reading.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We've approved items A through J. Now we're moving on to consideration of items that were removed from the consent calendar. So we're going to be going on to item K. City Manager Rodriguez, if you could read that and present it, please.
Yes, the item for council consideration is consider resolutions designating official depositories for the city of Richfield for two thousand twenty-five, including the approval of collateral. In compliance with Minnesota statutes, the city of Richfield must designate on an annual basis those financial institutions it does business with. U.S. Bank acts as the banking institution in the city's banking arrangement with the 4M Fund. The following resolutions for the City Council's consideration will designate U.S. Bank 4M Fund as a depository of city funds and designate certain savings and loan associations, banks, credit unions and financial institutions as depositories for the investment of city funds. The recommended action is by motion, adopt the attached resolutions designating official depositories with the understanding that the city could not invest in any of the depositories beyond the level of insurance coverage or the pledged collateral.
So for this particular item, we'll go ahead and consider it and we have a member of the council that would like to abstain due to a conflict of interest. So we'll do a individual roll call vote rather than just doing it by acclamation. So is there a motion to approve item K?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded to adopt the attached resolution designating official depositories with the understanding that the city could not invest in any of the depositories beyond the level of insurance company, or excuse me, insurance coverage or the pledged collateral. Is there any discussion? With that, I will put the resolution before us and you can have a choice of saying yes, or like yea, nay if you're against it, or abstain if you're going to abstain. So Councilmember Coleman Woods.
Yea.
Councilmember Christensen.
Yea.
Councilmembers Hayford, Leary.
Yea.
Councilmember Burke. Abstain, okay, and Councilmember, Mayor Supple, I will vote yea. So we have four yays and one abstention. So the motion passes. Moving on, we're going to go to item number four and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Hayford Leary to present that one.
Thank you. This item is to consider approval of the second reading of an ordinance amending City Code Section five fifty, floodplain management regulations and approval of a resolution authorizing summary publication. In April two thousand twenty-four, the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District adopted new rules applicable to floodplain management. The proposed revisions align city ordinances with new district requirements while maintaining established requirements concerning the FEMA-designated floodplain. The proposed revisions also clarify administration of the ordinance by designating the Water Resources Engineer as the official responsible for administering the ordinance. I will go ahead and just make the motion that we approve the second reading and approve the resolution authorizing summary publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I did have one question that I had asked earlier. How, do we have much floodplain in Richfield? And if Director Asher, could you talk, speak to that?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. We do not, we do have, there's a little tiny bit in the corner on Taft Park. As you can imagine, it's in Taft Park, but no, the city does not. We maintain this ordinance so that people are allowed to get flood insurance if they so choose and you know, the this ordinance also is for people that are around the water body and how they can, if they want to put a structure up or something, that kind of dictates that, dictates that.
Thank you. Is, are there any other questions, any other discussion? Okay, the motion before us has been made and seconded, hearing no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We have approved this item. Thank you, and thank you, staff. I'm going to move on to item five now. Councilmember Coleman Woods.
And the item before the council consideration is a first reading of an ordinance amendment regarding drive-through signs. The executive summary is Border Foods applicant proposes to replace their existing menu board sign Taco Bell seventy-seven forty Second Avenue South with a dynamic display. The zoning code currently does not address dynamic display drive-through signs. The sign code permits only one dynamic display sign per property and limits the area of the dynamic display to no more than thirty-five percent of the sign area. In practice, these regulations make it difficult for existing drive-through users to convert their existing menu boards to digital displays as they often already have a primary dynamic display or multiple drive-through signs. The thirty-five percent limitation is also impractical as it would require the drive-through sign to be majority static. The applicant has thus requested an ordinance amendment that would establish regulations specifically for dynamic drive-through signs. Currently, the zone code, zoning code only addresses drive-through signs within the conditional uses section of the mixed-use districts. Order boards are limited up to forty square feet and eight feet in height and they must be located within sixty feet of the business which they serve. Although drive-up uses are also additionally, are also allowed conditionally in the C-two district, there's no mention of order boards within the listed conditions in that district. For consistency and clarity, staff purpose, staff proposes moving order board regulations to the signed section of the code and reclassifying them as drive-through signs. This would be in keeping with cities in the metro areas such as Bloomington, Golden Valley and White Bear Lake that divi, that define drive-through or menu board signs as have separate regulations and are exemptions for them. In regard to dynamic display regulation, staff is proposing certain exemptions for drive-through signs as described in the policy section below. With new advancements in technology that often make it difficult to tell the difference between static and digital menu boards, there is merit in upon, excuse me, there is merit in updating and modernizing this zoning code to allow drive-through users to convert their existing drive-through signs to digital. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on December ninth. Aside from the applicant, no members of the public spoke. The commission unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance amendment as proposed. And the recommend act, recommended action by motion is to approve a first reading of an ordinance amendment regarding drive-through signs. And do staff have any questions or concerns?
I do not have anything to add other than to say that representatives of Border Foods are here tonight if you have any questions for them.
Thank you for joining us. Before someone makes the motion, do we have any questions for the representatives? Is there a motion then?
I would motion to approve the first reading.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, so we'll open it up for discussion. Is there anyone that has any questions for either the applicants or for staff or anyone who wishes to make any comments or discuss the matter? Councilmember Hayford Leary.
Thank you. I don't have any concerns with the immediate thing that's being proposed by Taco Bell here. I am concerned in general about these dynamic displays throughout the city. But just let me, so basically my concern is adding and allowing drive-through users to have a second additional sign in addition potentially to a main business sign that's also dynamic. So they have these boards that are changeable and then potentially they also have these menu boards that in some cases are just going to display the menu prices straightforwardly. But as the staff report notes, we don't control what's on those signs. They can use them similarly to the main display signs to show promotions and other things. So my, my, my primary concern, the dynamic signs, we don't really have enforcement capacity to address the way that they're used. You know, with traditional signs, the applicant comes, they show how big it is, they show how it looks, we review everything. When they put in these dynamic displays, it's very difficult because although we have well-intentioned rules to address the speed that they change, the brightness, et cetera, every time you get a new manager at a business, those things change. And so I do think the ask by the applicant is reasonable and I think it's reasonable to update these display signs. My ask is that, given the fact that these signs are not great neighbors, that if a business chooses to use these menu board signs, that they give up their ability to do an additional sign on the business. So they still get one display sign per business. They simply can decide whether that goes to their menu sign or that goes to the other main business sign. I did look at all our current drive-throughs in Richfield. The, the staff reported noted that, you know, this can potentially be in conflict, but only one business that has a drive-through currently has a sign that would be in conflict. So for every other business, they'd simply be choosing, do I want my dynamic display on the menu board or do I want it on the overhead sign? And you know, my concern of this, just as an example, I, I hate to call it the city, but the city has several of these signs. If anybody's going to be an expert on what our rules and regulations are for these, it would be us. And I've reported four different signs to the city manager and they've been dealt with very promptly and I appreciate that, of our own signs that are out of compliance. During the Planning Commission hearing, it was discussed by the Planning Commission that we lack specific standards to regulate the brightness of these signs. So in addition to not necessarily having the staff to go keep on top of how these signs are functioning, we don't even have clear rules to enforce them. So by simply directing staff in this case to allow the other changes, allow it to, to convert these signs, but keep a one dynamic sign per property rule, I think we will limit that and allow ourselves to mature those regulations to address things like those brightness standards that were discussed by the Planning Commission. So that's my desired change and I would certainly welcome thoughts from other council members on this.
I have one question with regard to that. So you're saying right now, if we made the change that you're suggesting, there would be one legally non-conforming sign that would be able to continue? Or I need a little bit more clarification on what you're asking for.
So my ask is again, one per business. So I'm saying of all the businesses in Richfield, only one would be prevented from converting their menu board for this reason, which would be the Dairy Queen on West Sixty-six. In fact, they couldn't anyway because it's too close to residential. So I'm saying if you adopted my change, you would prevent a Taco Bell or similar business of also doing a dynamic sign on their main Taco Bell sign if they chose to do the menu board. But nobody else would be prevented from converting their menu board. They would simply be giving up their ability to also do a sign on their main sort of logo roadside sign.
Any other comments or questions? I don't know if, if staff could react to that, if that's a change that's possible and it would be interesting to hear what the applicant thinks of that as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Supple. What I'm hearing is that you would like us to remove the exemption that is now being included in the proposed ordinance. Right now, we're proposing that the limit not apply to these order board signs. And what you're proposing is that we eliminate that exemption and there'd just be one dynamic sign allowed per property. From a, from staff perspective, I, I can't say that I feel strongly one way or another. I do, I do think that it is important to allow businesses this option. The technology, especially in weather like ours, I think can be very helpful. I know a number of you watched the Planning Commission meeting and the Border Foods representatives can speak to this too. They mentioned that this is the only remaining order board in their Minnesota system of over two hundred signs in stores that has not transitioned to an electronic sign. So limiting it to one, I, I don't have strong concerns about that. But I, I do think it's important to leave the option open.
So did the applicant want to say anything from the business perspective about if you were able to have a digital display or a menu board that you wouldn't be able to have, like your big sign? Go to speak at the microphone if you'd like to say something and then we can discuss more. I'm just trying to hear all the different perspectives.
Elk River, Minnesota. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. We would have no concern over that. We've found that in many of the, the cities that we've applied for the menu board, they continue to actually have the same code in place where there's only one dynamic sign per property. It's pretty rare that we find that you have multiple available. And the menu board, because for, in our instance, it's a national rollout from Taco Bell Corporate, our franchisor. So we, we don't have a lot of options with it. We've been proposed with the dynamic signs on our main pylon signs and we haven't, for our intent, we haven't found a lot of value to them. So the, the menu board, that one per property is actually preferred for our locations.
Thank you. And then I had a follow-up question. If we did that, could you have those kind where you split like into a Y and you have two lanes and then it comes back together? Would that still count under this ordinance if we make the change that Councilmember Hayford Leary is suggesting?
Council, or I'm sorry, Mayor Supple, that's a great question. I would need to go back and read the definition of a sign. I believe it's related to the faces. I could certainly bring that information for the second reading, but I don't have it with me tonight.
Okay, thank you. So I'm fine with saying it can, I understand where you're coming from, but I also don't want to put overly onerous regulations in place that are going to stop, put a, stop people from investing in Richfield. And so if it was just that you can have menu board signs or you could have the dynamic sign up there, that would be fine, but like I know I'm thinking about like the McDonald's in Richfield where you have two different signs or two different menu boards and then you come in. I don't want to put that kind of a roadblock in place. So if we're going to look at making the change that you're suggesting, I want to make sure that people have an option to have two menu board signs. So I, I did listen to the whole Planning Commission and I think this is a good proposal and I'm, I want to make sure that, that we're going to be able to go to having those dynamic signs on the menu boards. I'm just wondering if you're making the changes you're suggesting. I don't want to have the unintended consequence that say you could only have one drive-through lane and you couldn't have the split and then come back together. That would be a concern I would have, so I don't know if you want to.
Well, first off, I do want to say in general, I agree with you. My, my main concern is the dynamic menu board sign or signs and the business pylon sign both being there. The details of like if you want to allow like an advanced sign and then a larger menu board sign, I don't care if there's two displays there personally. I'll, I'll trust staff to address that. But yes, I think my goal is the same as yours. I, I will say that we don't, we don't normally allow the double drive-through anyway. So that's, I think McDonald's just has a special exception. But yeah, if, if it's necessary or useful for a business to have an advanced menu board sign and then a subsequent one, that's fine to me. I just don't want the double dipping with them getting the drive-through signs in addition to the, the sign out front.
Other comments or questions? Again, my concern is I want to make sure that we have a balance. I don't want to drift into overregulation because I know in, from what I've been seeing in some of our neighboring cities, when they put on too many regulations, then those businesses move out and I don't, I, so I want to have a balance, but I also want to be respectful of the neighbors and not having the light pollution and that type of thing. So again, I think this is a reasonable request that you're making to be able to put the digital menu boards in place and I would support the request. I would be fine with the compromise you're suggesting as long as we're not going to make it so somebody can't functionally have those menu boards in place. So I don't know if other people have comments or questions? Because I, I, I just want to make sure we don't drift into overregulation and that we have a balanced approach and that we do something that's reasonable. I'll just ask, is that something you could live with if we took away that pylon sign and just had it on menu boards? Is that, you'd be okay with that?
Absolutely, we would. I hadn't, as you were discussing it, we were talking about the logo sign and the menu board. In the future, that would be helpful to have if, if there was an option to, to split lanes and have a second menu board and still not get that logo sign. That would be something that we would have interest in if we got to that point in the future.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess that gets to the question that you said you don't know if that's allowed. And so that'd be information we'd need to have staff bring back to us and to consider at the second reading. I don't know what the rules are on splitting.
Oh, I, I can tell you that in the mixed-use districts, you can only have a single drive-through lane. So that would not be an option for this particular applicant. In the C-two district, I believe you are able to have two lanes. And so in that case, I would need to review this, the definition of a sign and see if that would be considered two signs. But it, it sounds to me like what you're asking staff to do is to bring back an ordinance that would strike what is Section four, letter J in their proposed ordinance and then identify order board signs as, define order board signs and allow those to have the dynamic display.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yes, thank you.
Quickly, but.
You're asking staff to bring back an ordinance that would strike letter J from Section four. Letter J reads, dynamic drive-through signs are exempt from Section five forty-nine point two-five subdivision two, items A through C. That is the section that limits dynamic displays to a single dynamic display. So what you're asking is us to eliminate that exception or exemption from that. And then you'd like the definition of, it was order board signs, I believe, drive-through sign to be drive-through signs. sign to be drive-through signs and include dynamic displays would be allowed on multiple drive-through signs. To that effect, yes?
And just to confirm, the other changes that are described, like the limitation on the percentage of the sign that's dynamic, they could still do the entire menu board digitally with the?
Yes, yes. We're just proposing to eliminate the exemption for the number.
Okay, that's, that is what I wanted, and thank you for translating it into a functional change.
And so you'll put that into the staff report for the next?
Yes, that will all be, all the changes will be detailed in the staff report, and we will provide a revised ordinance as the attachment.
Okay, so then I have a question for City Attorney Teigen. Given that, do we then pass this as it is on the first reading and then the changes are made on the second, or does there have to be some kind of amendment?
Mayor, appropriate motion would be to approve the first reading and directing staff to make the noted changes to bring back for the second reading.
Okay.
Since we're currently discussing the amendment as, where the motion is written, I could just make a motion to amend that motion, right?
That is true, we did.
Because we're already in discussion.
Oh, you have, you have them, right. You can make a motion to amend, yes.
Okay, I will make a motion to amend the item we're currently considering to remove the exception as described in the previous discussion, limiting drive-through signs or dynamic signs to one per property.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there further discussion? So to clarify, we will be able to have menu signs that are, drive-through menu signs that are dynamic, we just wouldn't have the dynamic ones and another one that's like the big pylon sign. Does everybody understand what we're voting on for this amendment? So we'll vote just on the amendment, and then we'll vote on the motion as amended. So we are voting on making that amendment. And make sure your microphones are turned on so that your green light is showing. All in favor, please say, of that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That amendment has passed. Now we're back to the main motion as amended. Is there any further discussion or any other questions that anyone has for staff? All in favor of the main motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have approved the main motion as amended. Next, we'll move on, and thank you for coming in tonight. We'll move on to item six, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to consider adoption of a resolution approving the contract with Teamsters 320, the sergeant's bargaining unit for the period January 1st, 2024 through December 31, 2025, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. City staff has completed labor negotiations with Teamsters 320, the sergeants. The provisions of the 2024-2025 labor agreement cover all nine sergeant positions. The two-year contract provides the following changes. Increase in vacation sellback from 48 hours to 64 hours to match our non-union policy. Increase the total annual holiday leave from 96 hours to 104 hours because of the additional Juneteenth holiday. Include the same employer-provided health and dental insurance contributions as given to the non-represented employee groups. Wage adjustments to include a 3.0% COLA and an 8.4% market adjustment for the top step in 2024, and a 3.0% COLA and a 1.0% market adjustment for all steps in 2025. Add a new specialty pay of $300 per month effective January 1st, 2025. The higher starting pay is consistent with the wages required to compete in this, in the historically tight market for law enforcement personnel. The introduction of specialty pay is similar to the police officer's pay plan that includes additional compensation for special assessments. By motion, I'm asking for, to adopt a resolution approving the provisions of the 2024-2025 labor agreement with the Teamsters 320 bargaining unit and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Does the staff have any other further questions or comments?
Thank you, councilmember. I just wanted to thank HR Manager Heffner, who's here tonight, and may also want to introduce the item. And also thank you to the stewards for the sergeants' union. It has been a long haul this year, and it's a very tight labor market, so it made negotiations more challenging, but we believe this is a good and fair contract, and I will turn it over to HR Manager Heffner.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, and welcome, Councilmember Burke and Councilmember Coleman Woods. I just wanted to say a few words just to kind of re-educate on kind of where we're at with our contracts. This is our final contract, hooray, for 2024 and '25. As you know, we had a bit of a delay with our '24 contracts because of our class study, and we wanted to be cognizant of that as we went into our negotiations with all of our groups. So we do have five contracts, again, this one being the final one to get approved. We have our Public Works Group, we have our FIRE, and then we have three contracts in our Public Safety Division, which includes our lieutenants, our police officers, and then this final one with our sergeants. We'll likely be starting again here in the spring, summer, so you'll be seeing these five contracts come again shortly, hopefully. We typically do try to negotiate it to your contract, so we'll continue on that. Otherwise, I would welcome any questions that you might have on the contract that's in front of you. Thank you.
So there is a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, do we have any questions for staff?
I had a question.
All right, go ahead.
I'm not familiar with the specialty pay. Can you describe that and at whose discretion that occurs and how that works?
Yes, thank you, councilmember. So we have specialty pay for the sergeants, we also have it for the officers, and it is when they're assigned, they, this is part of their, their training as well, so they get assigned to different areas as they, and they get rotated on. So some specialty pay assignments are for investigations, for example. I believe the K-9 unit is another one. It used to be the officer in the school districts, and so that's some examples that I can think of off the top of my head.
Are there other questions? Any discussion? Before we vote, I want to thank both parties in the negotiations, both our HR staff and the police union representatives. I always think it's important to have everybody working together, and so I want to thank both parties in that. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have approved the agreements, thank you. Next, we will move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I don't have anything to report tonight.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda would be claims and payroll.
I move to approve claims and payroll.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve claims and payroll. Are there any questions, comments? All in favor of approving claims and payroll, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We've approved claims and payroll. Now, for the new councilmembers, for hats off to hometown hits, we kind of rotate it around and we get to have council discussion, and so I'll start off with the councilmembers that have been here before, so you have a little time to think about it. So we'll go to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I regret not giving my new colleagues more time, but I have no items for tonight. Sorry. Good job, oh, good job on the lighting work by our staff. I really appreciate it.
Too cold to have any, yeah, too cold, yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Christensen.
I have a couple things thinking about cold weather and the lack of snow thereof or whatever. I do have to have a hats off to the city crews who do amazing work, no matter if we have a few inches or a few feet out there on the roads, keeping it safe and plowed and salted and things to get us moving in the mornings when we're usually still sleeping, so. And then the other thing is the, I had an incident a week or two ago, and one of the city staff, Sarah from the IT department, helped me out. I had to come in and have my iPad looked at to change some things around so I can have access to things. And it's nice to know that behind the scenes in the city here that there are a lot of people that help each other out, so, yeah, that's it.
All right, the other part of it is the mayor usually goes last, so Councilmember Burke, do you have any?
Yep, definitely. I want to thank the staff for their patience with one of the newbies on the council and with answering my questions as thoroughly and succinctly and patiently as you have, so I want to thank you all for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Coleman Woods.
I do want to give hats off to our Public Works Department who helped handle a water main break in Ward 3 area last week. That was my first order of civic duty to direct them to the non-emergency line when they, when a concerned neighbor called, and she just happens to have my personal phone number two. So hats off to those neighbors for keeping a watchful eye over our, over our streets. It got really cold really fast, so I appreciate the Public Works Department. And a huge shout out to one of our Richfield High School players who reached scoring 2,000 points in his career, and he's not done yet, so hats off to CJ Armstrong.
Thank you. I would also like to do a hats off to the recreation staff. For the first time, I went to candlelight and ice at Woodlake Nature Center, and I would encourage everyone to participate in that next year. It was amazing, and fortunately, it wasn't quite so cold that night, but it was very well organized, so I believe over 1,300 people went through, but it didn't seem like a big crowd, and you could go out and walk on the paths, and they had, like, they were reusing some milk jugs with the little battery-operated candles on them, so you could walk around in the dark and appreciate things. So hats off to recreation staff and to all the volunteers that helped with that. And then I also would like to give hats off to Mr. Willis and the Richfield Middle School newspaper staff. They invited me over on Monday because they wanted to interview a city official, and I was so thoroughly impressed with the questions that the students came up with, the whole, just, it was such a positive experience. And I mean, there were questions there. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, you'd be proud, they were asking urban planning questions. So we had sixth graders, they were asking like adult-level thoughtful questions, and like, like a simpler one was like, well, we're glad you're going to be redoing Woodlake Nature Center, but what's the plan that the city has to protect the animals during construction? So they're thinking and making a lot of thoughtful things that I was really impressed, so I'd say hats off to those middle school students for all the thoughtful questions they were coming up with, and hats off to Mr. Willis, their advisor. So with that, thank you, everyone. It's been a great meeting, I hope you all stay warm. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Well, somebody has to make the motion, I'm just entertaining.
I'm sorry. I make a motion that we leave the meeting, end the meeting.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We stand adjourned.